It's June 15, 2021. The time is 7:00 PM. This is the Hingham Select Board having our first in-person meeting for over 12 months. Been well over 12 months. The governor's emergency regulations have expired and we are in person. Welcome all and welcome to Tom Mayo, our town administrator who has returned from an extended recuperation.
Thank you. It's good to be back.
Great to have you. I'll call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is approval of minutes. I would accept the motion to approve the minutes of June 7, 2021.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes dated June 7, 2021.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next minute's June 8.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated June 8, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, June 10.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated June 10, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are approved on the minutes. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to consider the issuance of three separate special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Burke's Brewing Company, Inc. for sunset picnics at Weir River Farms to be held on July 1, July 8, and July 15, 2021 from 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Is Brian Burke here?
Yes, the president.
Please explain to us what's going on.
Sure. Yeah, I was invited by the trustees for their inaugural sunset picnic.
To the microphone.
Sorry. Yes, and actually, if you can give your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Brian Burke. I'm at 111 Fitzroy Drive in Hingham. And I was asked a couple of months back by the trustees to participate in their inaugural sunset picnic event as a provider of beer for the event. I'm one of a number of so short burriers that will be participating. And we were asked to do July 1, 8, and 15. That's why we're here today.
Isn't this so different from a Zoom meeting?
Oh, I love it.
When you go up to the podium and say, like, just not used to it. Liz, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'm assuming the setup is the same as the other picnics at Weir River Farm?
It will be.
Okay.
Are there any members of the public with comments or questions about this? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the issuance of three separate special one-day wine and malt beverage licenses to Brian Burke on behalf of Burke's Brewing Company Incorporated for sunset picnics at Weir River Farm to be held on July 1, July 8, and July 15, 2021 from 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to consider a concession agreement for Lynch Field with Hingham Little League, Hingham Youth Hockey, and Hingham Youth Football effective from June 15, 2021 for one year through June 14 of 2022. Is Kathy Riley here? Please come up. You can address us from here. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
And again, if you could give your name and address for the record.
I will. I don't live in Hingham. But my name is Kathy Riley and I'm the procurement and contracts director in the town administrator's office. And I'm from Abington.
We will not hold that against you.
Close. Okay. So the, we have a concession agreement that is typically done every five years. It is between the town and the youth sports programs, including hockey, baseball, and youth football, the nonprofit organizations. As one, they call them the concessionaires. It's a concession agreement that is still overseen by the National Parks Department in the sense of dictating how we can use the land, which is recreationally, recreational use only. This concession agreement is for specifically Lynch Field, and it's with this organization primarily for the field hosts and the use of the fields during their seasons. They have the responsibility to maintain the field house, to pay the bills, the utilities, to keep it clean, the bathrooms, the concessions, all of that.
And also to provide insurance.
To provide insurance, yes. Yes, they're responsible for that. The town is responsible for the parking lots, the mowing, plowing. We recently with this, because of the change in the way that the recreation department is now managing all the fields, they are now going to take over the irrigation system maintenance, which was something that the youth groups had, had, had responsibility before. We, so that, that is one change that just happened. It is expiring and it needs to be renewed, and so that's what this is.
Great. Thank you. So, you know, as you mentioned, we had a field study and there's now integration with all the town fields. Last year, this board authorized a one-year agreement with, with that, with that group. And that agreement provided that they would have an option to renew. And so we are honoring that option to renew, but ultimately, I think we are looking to integrate all of the fields into a consistent management. So I think this is going to be quite enjoyable season for the kids. They've been cooped up for so long and I'm really looking forward to this. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Just one clarification. So this is a one-year term, right? The extension is for one year?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that right? Great.
Michelle or Tom?
Nothing.
Nope. Thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will accept the motion on this.
Okay. I will make a motion to sign the concession agreement for Lynch Fields with Hingham Little League, Hingham Youth Hockey, and Hingham Youth Football effective from June 15, 2021 through June 14, 2022.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Juneteenth. This coming Saturday is June 19, and it will be the first time that Juneteenth is a legal holiday in Massachusetts. The holiday commemorates the day in 1865 that enslaved persons in Galveston, Texas learned of their freedom two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. General Gordon Granger of the U.S. Army, who at the time was in command of the District of Texas, issued a general order stating that all slaves are free. Last July in 2020, Governor Charlie Baker signed legislation making June 19 an official state holiday. Thirteen years after the state's only black governor, Deval Patrick, signed the proclamation proclaiming Juneteenth in Massachusetts. Juneteenth is a moment of reflection for this country. Last year, the Harvard professor and historian Annette Gordon Reed published a piece in The New Yorker magazine about her childhood in Texas and the meaning of the holiday for her family and community. "Juneteenth and the Fourth of July were inexorably linked during those years," she notes, "in part because the Declaration of Independence carried a promise yet to be fulfilled for black Americans." Quote, "I also did not know as a child," she writes, "how intensely African-Americans had fought to keep alive the memory of Juneteenth, to commemorate our ancestors' struggles and their hopes, and to link them to our own." And it's in that spirit that we have a proclamation for, for the town of Hingham. And Liz, if you could start, please.
Sure. Whereas on June 19, 1865, two and a half years after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and that enslaved people were now free. And whereas Major General Granger announced to the residents of Texas, "The people of Texas are informed that, in accordance with a proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property. Between former masters and slaves and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor." And whereas the first Juneteenth celebration was held in Texas in 1866, since then, Juneteenth has been celebrated in communities across the United States, providing an opportunity to mark the emancipation of enslaved people. And...
And whereas June 19 is now designated in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a state holiday. And whereas on this day, in hundreds of communities across the country, people of all races, nationalities, and religions join hands to acknowledge the painful history and lasting systemic impact of slavery and racial injustice in the United States. Juneteenth is an opportunity to recommit ourselves to the goal of creating a more equal and just society, an effort that continues today. Now, therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of Hingham, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2021 to be Juneteenth Independence Day, and we urge each citizen to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to proclaim June 19, 2021 as Juneteenth Independence Day in the town of Hingham.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proclamation is approved. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is discussion of proposed World's End mooring plan and harbor regulations. And I'd ask Ken Corson to come up to the desk. Thank you. And Ken, before you begin, I just want to thank you for the work you've put in on this. And to make it clear, at least my understanding, that the only action that this board is going to be considering this evening is specifically the World's End rafting proposed regulations. There are a lot of items that need to be addressed and that you are addressing, but at this point, I think we will be limiting ourselves in terms of the action we'd be taking to that one topic.
That's correct.
Great. So please, the floor is yours.
Thank you for having me. If you don't mind, I'm going to provide a little bit of background context before we jump into the World's End regulations. Approximately 10 years ago, 2010, 2011, the town for the first time adopted written regulations governing moorings. We also approved several mooring plans throughout town: inner harbor, outer harbor, World's End, and the back river. Since then, we've been monitoring the regulations, looking at any issues that are in the mooring plans concerning the rafting, tying of vessels, specifications for moorings. We've looked at these closely over the last 10 years. Over the last four years, we've delved into a little bit closer to not only just review and look at things, but try to determine what types of actions and corrections we can make to make sure that mooring of vessels in the town is not only safe, but we look at other things such as the number of people that are on waiting lists. So we've looked at that stuff closely over the last four years and made some proposed changes, which we've shared with the Harbor Development Committee, we've shared it with the public. In the regulations specifically, which we're not changing anything in the written regulations except for maybe World's End, we've changed things such as definitions, we've made revisions and cleaned up the language, making things more precise in some instances and just clarifying practices that go on. We also looked at anchoring specifications, such as the types of weighted mushrooms or anchors that need to be placed in the mud, as well as the chains and the buoys. And we've also considered adding and dredging, dredging regulations that we use every 10 years to prepare the inner harbor for dredging. So those are primarily the things that we looked at in the regulations excluding World's End. At the same time, we also considered a revised plan for the inner harbor mooring area, which was approved last year after dredging. After we dredged the harbor, we looked at the needs of that area, the number of people on the waiting list, the types of boats that we're looking to get in there, and we crafted a new mooring plan to address today's needs, not what we had 10 years ago. We also, at that time, looked at World's End, which has a waiting list of approximately 65 people. There's four transient moorings, and there's approximately 41 moorings in that area. I think in the last 10 years, we've probably added about five people from the waiting list. Certainly, I don't think any more than 10, if that.
You said five people. How many is?
In the last 10 years, I don't think we've added that many. So we looked at the needs of World's End, and there's a lot of visitors that come in there. On a weekend, we can have anywhere from three, four, maybe even, three or 400, maybe even more. And we looked at the needs of the harbor, the conditions in there, and we tried to come up with some solutions to better manage this area. To do that, we worked with an engineering firm and we crafted a new mooring plan. This new mooring plan would add 13 new moorings, and it would allow us to take some people off the waiting list and reserve some of those moorings for transient rentals for people that don't have a permit to be able to make a reservation and enjoy that area. We considered two tidal anchorages at the time, so that the, the vessels that wanted to come in and anchor wouldn't be anchoring in and around the moorings, but they'd have a specific area that they could go in and anchor. To put a plan like this in place, we'd have to adjust the regulations, and we considered limiting the number of permits that an entity could have, which would be a person or corporation. Right now, the maximum is two. We considered reducing that to one. That would open up another five moorings for people to come off the waiting list. Like I said, we considered no anchoring the mooring area, having those tidal anchorages, and we considered a three-boat raft.
When you say consider, what does that mean, a three-boat raft?
Yeah, so that would be a maximum of three boats that would be rafting or tying onto a mooring. And the way we got to the three-boat raft wasn't just an arbitrary pick for numbers. I did share with you some charts that were drafted up by the engineering firm. And if you added 13 moorings into that area, we can see, we looked at a couple of different, different options. We looked at three-boat rafts and, and five-boat rafts. If you add 13 moorings into there, and you take into the fact that people swim off their boats, they tie up floats, you put a 25-foot swimming area around it, and you look at the area where there's water at low tide, which is relatively restricted, there's a small area where you have, the boats are actually able to, to be moored. And the area can't really support more than a three-boat raft under, when you consider the new mooring plan, can't really accommodate more than a three-boat raft or tying of vessels when you have anchoring and these other activities going on there. So that's how we got to the three-boat raft. We also have to take into consideration that this area is an area of critical environmental concern. There's different wildlife habitat that are also in that area. So that's the, the update on the World's End mooring plan. But not looking to implement that at this time, mainly because we're well into the summer, and I think it will take some time to move the existing moorings into new locations and then add people from the waiting list and, and put the 13 new moorings in. So I don't recommend that we go forward with that at this point in time. But what I would like to do is consider a rafting restriction of up to five boats at this point in time. Last summer, we had a rafting restriction of three, and the area was much more manageable. But with the existing mooring plan, I think we can accommodate safely five boats on each mooring. That would allow the center boat to be connected to the mooring with two boats on either side, and there's still sufficient room for people to swim, kayak, do all the activities that they like to do off their boat, and it will facilitate anchoring in that area. We're not looking to restrict anchoring at this point in time. I think it's a reasonable number. I think it's a safe number. I think it works in that area, and it will give us an opportunity to see how that works this summer before we make any more permanent decisions for that area concerning adding additional moorings and regulations. If we were to put this rafting restriction in place, it would be effective for the summer, and it would be a permanent change to the regulations unless we may, it wouldn't be anything temporary. It would be a permanent change, no more than five vessels unless we, unless that was changed again in the future. There's been a fair amount of publicity over this. We've sent communications to the boaters. We had a public hearing last year. I think everyone is aware of this. We have a lot of boaters that come into that area. They're all very respectful. They're good boaters. They're smart. They're diligent. They follow the rules. And I think that they, they have an interest, obviously, which I can understand, that they want to maximize the use of that mooring and have as many boats and people that they safely can. But it's problematic when there's large numbers of boats that we have to then ask to disperse. You're not able to pass through the waterway because it's obstructed with the rafts, or they end up being aground, and you can't even get to the boat if there was an issue. So we need to make sure that the area is, is still navigable, that we can get in there if there's, if there's an issue, and that we can get to the boats when we need to, and allow people to safely swim if they can. There's kayaking, allowing to all these other activities. So I think that's a reasonable number, and that's what I'm considering putting forth right now. As I'm sure the board knows, the regulations of the harbor are something that the harbor master, or all best words I can think of, is basically he makes them and he enacts them. And, and that's what I would be doing here. But I think it's an important part of the public process to, to inform the board of selectmen as to what's going on, how we get to where we are, the decisions we're making, so that you're aware of it. You have the opportunity, opportunity to provide any advice or consent before I make any type of changes. If we go forward with this, if I, if I find you have support for this and I decide to go forward with it, there would be a small period of time of publicity where we have to put this into the paper, share it with the environmental police for any feedback, and we will let the people know when this goes into effect. And at that point in time, there would be rafting limit of, of five boats. That's kind of a summary of a lot of work over a lot of years. And I entertain any questions that the board might have on any of that at this point.
Well, I think, you know, increasing the number of moorings, given the length that some people have been on the, on the waitlist, is commendable. And I understand that if we increase the number of moorings, then the number of boats that can be rafted per mooring will be impacted. And so there's, there's that trade-off. And, and I understand that you, you've searched and have reached what you think is an appropriate balance. And I also think it, it makes sense to hold off increasing the mooring, the number of moorings this year. I mean, I was looking around just to see what other towns do and if they have limits on rafting, just to see where we fall. So I noticed, just checking some places, like in Oak Bluffs, they do three or four boats with a maximum of four boats allowed on a raft. The town of Westport, no more than two vessels can be rafted. The town of Marion, no more than three boats can be rafted. In Chilmark, no rafting of boats. So it seems that a number of communities have certainly adopted rafting restrictions that more, are more restrictive than what you're proposing. And I understand that you're, you are trying to strike a balance between what, what safety needs are, what environmental issues are, and also the freedom of the ways for, for boaters. So I really appreciate your work here. Liz, do you have any questions?
A couple of questions. What, can you talk a little bit about the critical environment concerns and how that's impacted by more boats there and the anchorages maybe disrupting the area?
Sure, sure. So the Weir River ACEC was enacted in, I believe it was 1986. There's about 950 acres in that area completely. It's some of the most extensive salt marsh in, in the greater Boston area. It's, the whole area is subject to intense development pressure, specifically this area, World's End, where the, where the boats migrate to and anchor and raft, is an area that, is part of an area that, that supports over 100 migratory birds, both migratory and residential birds. There's also small mammals that live in that area. There's a large shellfish bed. It's also the nursery and feeding area for finfish, including alewives, smelt, flounder, bluefish, striped bass. If you look at the coven World's End, at low tide, the, the middle area becomes basically a mud flat, and there's kind of like a horseshoe where there's water. So that is a habitat for a lot of different animals. And, you know, we need to take that into consideration. It's not the primary driving force here. It's, but it's one of the factors that we looked at when we were considering making some of these, these changes.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I do appreciate the, the need to increase accessibility. We want more people to be able to enjoy the area. But I know we talked about it's late in this season to kind of disrupt the entire mooring field, so certainly support delaying that. Is there more data that you're hoping to gather this boating season to impact future decisions?
Yeah, we'd like to see, you know, we saw how the three-boat raft was last year. That was obviously without 13 additional moorings.
Right.
We take that into consideration. We'd like to see how the five-boat raft works this year, again, without the, the 13 additional moorings. There'll also be anchoring. There won't be any restriction on anchoring. There won't be a, you don't have to have any type of permit for, mooring permit with the town to anchor. So we'd like to see how all these things kind of play out and how it works out. And that would definitely be something that we would take into consideration before we issue any new regulations for this area or a new mooring plan.
Okay, great. And if you do choose to anchor, do they have to notify you first?
There's, there's no written, there's no need to notify for anchoring. Currently, the, the regulations allow for people to anchor within town up to 48 hours.
Okay.
That's something that is still being considered, whether we, it should be changed. A lot of other communities, when you go into town, you have to notify the anchor, the harbor master that you're anchoring. And that's something that might be changed in the future, but right now, that's not what we're looking to do.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My understanding of your five raft proposal is that's, that's a maximum, that if you come across a circumstance where you think it's impeding navigation, you can still say, too many. So...
That's correct.
You're still reserving that judgment.
Exactly. So there could still be a raft of three boats that, in the area where that boat is, it might not work. I don't anticipate that being an issue, but it's, it's still something that could, could be an issue. The other concern that people might have is a small tender, 10-foot tender off the transom of a boat. So you have three boats, you know, let's say you have five boats rafted in the small tender. You know, that's, that's now five boats. A small tender is something that we're not relatively concerned about. So if there were, you know, five boats in a small 10-foot tender, that's probably not something we're going to tell them that they have to get rid of. There's a little bit of discretion here in that respect, too. But if it's a 25-foot boat tied off the transom, and it's, you know, 20 feet away and it's obstructing navigation, then that would be a challenge. We'd have to have that vessel leave.
Great. I don't know if this is the time to ask, in terms of your pumping operations, is that affected by the number of boats that are rafted? Do you need more work for you? Is it...
We, we don't deny anyone a pump out. If a vessel requests a pump out and we're able to provide that service, the boats in that area, it will provide that service. So traditionally on the weekends, it spends most, if not all, the day back there pumping out boats. It leaves when it needs to, to discharge, and it comes back. We also have the four transient moorings that we have to check for reservations. So it's a busy area, and, you know, we never want to deny someone a pump out because we don't want the waste to go into the water. But we can't always get to all the boats. And it's, it's a, it's a large demand on, on our department. It's a small department. We get reimbursed for three-quarters of what we spend, but we far, we spend far beyond what the allotment is, and it turns out to be maybe half or even less that we get reimbursed for. But it's a valuable service, and we're going to always do everything we can to continue providing the highest level for pump outs.
Great. So with that, I would turn to members of the public. If you've got any comments or questions, if you do, I'll recognize you, go to the podium, and then please address your comments or questions to the chair. Anyone wish to speak?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So you want to go?
Yeah, please.
It's part of the outfit. Come on.
What's that?
It's part of the outfit.
Part of the outfit.
Okay. If you can just give your name and address.
Sure. I'm David Giogrando, Nine Bagnell Road in Weymouth. A couple of quick questions. Thank you for the, the comprehensive detail. That was really helpful. Can you speak a little more to the three, the three-boat or the five-boat, whatever number boat limit, how that is calculated? Is it based on footage width, if you will? Because three 25-foot center consoles is very different than three 45-foot sport fishermen or cab cruisers or what have you.
Yeah.
So when you say the number of... So when you say the number of boats, it seems a little like, you know, you could have eight center consoles that don't even equal that. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
Is it a footprint?
Yeah, so we-
Because you said you used an engineering firm, so I'm guessing it was numbers.
Yeah, so we have, I think it's 120 or 150-foot area in the horseshoe that at low tide, going from, I think it's negative three to negative three, where we have, where the boats anchor. So we looked at, number one, being the type of tackle that's down there. So you have the mushroom, you have the chain, and the buoy. The mushroom and the chain that we, the minimum requirement there, can only hold a certain amount of weight and so forth. So we, and you take into windage and all these other things into consideration. Now, the moorings could be heavier, the chain could be heavier, but there's only so much that the gear can hold. And if you have, so we looked at that. And then while we looked at that, we took into consideration there are different sized boats. We have, you know, you're right, you could have a small 18-foot center console, all the way up to, you know, there could be a 65-foot boat. So we worked off a boat that was 40 feet long. I think the beam might have been about 10 feet, and that's what we used throughout the area. Take into consideration that you could have smaller and you could have larger, but we used that number. We felt that was an appropriate gauge. And then we built in a 25-foot area around the boat for people to be swimming, jumping off the bow, off the stern of the boat with a raft and a line out. So we added that in there. And then we looked at it, and we said, "Well, that's really pretty tight." Now, if you try to put anchoring of vessels in there, there's really not much room. There's some room, but there's not a whole lot. So that's how we got to the three-boat raft. Now, you could use a smaller length of vessel, you could increase the mooring gear, you could do a whole bunch of things, but aside from very heavy mooring gear and making a bunch of changes that didn't seem feasible, this was the best metric to go forward and use.
So Ken, in terms of being able to communicate the rules concisely and for enforcement purposes, you're not coming up with a formula which is, you know, take the number of boats and multiply it by the length and divide it by, it's just pretty easy. It's five at this point.
Yes, yes. And there was some recommendations from the engineer with their expertise.
But, you know, I think your point is right. I mean, boats, different sizes, different, right? But in terms of being able to communicate that to boaters and then having someone go around and say, you know, "Well, your boat is too long, so therefore, it's going to be fewer," that can create some real challenges.
I think everyone knows the length of their boat and the beam of their boat, and so if the footprint is X, maximum of X, it's very easy for boaters to figure out, "Am I in the, are we in the eight of us or the two of us, whatever it is? Are we within the footprint?"
It is, but we haven't been able to get there over the last 10 years.
But it hasn't really been communicated, there's been no guidelines to communicate that.
We're out there informing the public all the time that, you know, "This raft's too long, you're in the mud." So it's, I think, we need to come, we have to come up with something that's easily communicated to the public. They know that this is the number of boats. There's, it's not subjective, it's very objective, this is what it is, and it's easy to enforce. And I think that this gets us to that area.
And what I've seen in other communities is they're picking a number. They're picking three. But your point is, I think, mathematically absolutely valid.
I mean, I think you're minimizing the ability of the rafters and the boaters to comply with a footprint.
But I think we also have to-
If one is clearly communicated, and no offense, but having grown up here, and I'm not, I don't want to be the guy who's like, "It's always been this way, so it shouldn't change." It's been a wonderful place, World's End, to grow up, to boat, and learn how to swim there. You used to be able to waterski there at high tide over that mud flat, but we don't do that anymore. So, I mean, it's just, it is a wonderful place, and it feels like we're actually minimizing the opportunity to enjoy it for various reasons, whether they be financial, revenue for the town with moorings and/or safety, but I just ask that the group consider-
This is not a financial model that's being addressed?
That's good to hear. Because when we last heard about it, there was a lot of talk about, and this is more revenue, $50 a mooring, new moorings per day equals X, which is great for the town, I get it.
So ultimately, when we have more moorings, that will be another discussion. But what we're talking here is we're not changing the mooring field, and we're coming up with a policy that hopefully is manageable. And I think you're, I will take in consideration-
Thank you, I appreciate that. And just one other final question, if I could. I wasn't clear. So your, whatever your recommendation is ultimately, for any changes in the future, have to be approved by this board or that you unilaterally get to approve that?
So you can direct that to me, and I can answer the question.
Sorry.
Which is-
Procedurally. Thank you.
Under state law, it is the harbor master who issues the regulations. We do not issue the regulations, so that they will reside with our harbor master. He comes to us in part for our advice and in part to make sure that it's communicated well to the public, in a part to make sure we keep funding his gas so that he can get out there with his boat. But it's, you know, it is his decision.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm Mark War, 33 Elm Street.
Hi.
I am a member of the Harbor Development Commission, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Development Commission. I have a comment and a question. So first of all, in context of the history, right, there were never any regulations. So five seems like a reasonable number, and it's a good way to test it, and I applaud you for that decision. The question I have is, have there been any reportable safety incidents in the last 10 years in World's End where there was a significant safety hazard? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, we have had numerous issues back there in World's End that were safety, especially this past weekend where we had a vessel that hit another boat and then took off. So there are challenges back there that we, and we work diligently to be proactive. That's a little bit different than on land, on the waterways, where I was looking for things that could be a safety issue when we try to correct it before it becomes an accident or something like that. So the boats work very diligently. We usually have two boats back there on a busy weekend day, trying to mitigate anything that could be of danger. I mean, we did have a situation with not so much a boat, but we had a person on land that needed to be evacuated, that she had a heart attack, and we had to perform CPR. We could barely get out of there, and you can't make any wake. So that was a challenge for us. And recognizing that and some of the other situations back there, we need to make sure that the waterway is navigable and that we can address any issues that may arise in the future. Hopefully, they won't, but should they?
Sounds prudent. The second question is, on the waitlist for these moorings in World's End, is there a charge to be on the waitlist?
I believe there is.
Yes, there's a $15 charge to be on a waiting list.
Okay. And so we're pretty certain that those people that are all on the list really want one, right? Because they're paying the $15 every year and they don't forget.
That's my understanding, that everyone there wants one. Actually, some of those people have suggested that it be an annual lottery system for a mooring rather than, you know, people holding these permits almost indefinitely, but we're not at that stage right now. But they do want their moor. They would like to have the opportunity to have a mooring out there.
Sounds like that needs to study, Ken. I'm all in favor of studies.
We've been studying this for about three or four years intently, so it's been well studied, I can assure you that.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Milton Schull. I'm from Waltham, Mass. First, I want to thank you. Your last year was very difficult for you. We were out there quite a bit, and you were always courteous, and I know it was a storm of just, it was just a mess out there, and I appreciate your patience with everybody, and that you did a great job. We observed you all season, so thank you.
Thank you. It wasn't just me, there was my staff, too.
Your staff. When I say you, I meant you and your staff.
Understood.
I'm sorry. So I'm a member of the Watertown Yacht Club. We've had, we've been using World's End since the late 1940s. We've had moorings probably since the 1970s. So we've had four generations of families using this. It's a great place to go, as everybody here knows. We respect the place. We've always been proactive. Anytime we've been asked to do something or to comply with something, we've always done it. I think five boats is reasonable. I think there's no question that I've gone down there and seen moorings with eight boats and I've been uncomfortable just even trying to get by them. Couple of things I'm concerned about is, I understand about the waitlist, especially for residents and people that want to get on it.
If I could just interrupt you there. So the mooring permits are not based on residents?
No, I know that, but there are some residents that live close and they want to get out there. So I apologize for the confusion. It's kind of hot, and it's a delicate thing. I mean, you look at the Patriots, there's a 50,000-person waitlist, and, you know, you can't tell Robert Kraft to cut people off, to put people on. So it's definitely a delicate thing, and I know you guys are trying to work out on this. The safety issue of my concern is, right now, there's no area, designated area for anchoring, but the people that anchor in the channel, and when those boats start to swing, especially with five boats, if there's, like you said, you mentioned emergency, it's very difficult to get by those anchor lines. And for you to come up to, I'm not saying you, I'm just, again, please, in general, for someone to come up and say, "All right, you guys got to break off, you know, you've got five boats, your swing ratio is too big," but there's an anchor line in the channel that's not being addressed. So there's got to be some type of discretion there about, well, maybe the moorings should have priority over the anchor people, and they should be moving. Again, it's just, I've been going on that for years, and it's just my thought. And maybe there should be, maybe we should start charging the people who do own moorings a pump out fee, whether they use it or not, just to try and offset your costs. I know these things are expensive. We have a pump out at our facility also, and it gets very costly, even though you do, like you say, get reimbursed, but it's fractional. But it's a longstanding tradition at our club. We respect everything. We were asked to upgrade our chains and our ball and everything else, and we did it all. We always want to do it. It's, you know, this town has a Stokton tradition, just like we are at the club, where blue collar and some people, this is their vacation. They go there on weekends, and that's it. So I think five boats is a very reasonable request. Last year was difficult with the one and then three, but I think you're going in the right direction, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How are you doing? My name is Brian Blair, 7991 Forest Street in Marsham, Massachusetts. I had written you an email about this whole issue, and in that email, I said, "Try five or six boats." And I have been in raft up that we're too big, and we have been nervous about it. Not saying, one thing I would ask is that, instead of making it permanent, make it a temporary. Try it for a year, see how it does. Just like the COVID restrictions. It had to be disregarded by, I think, May 26, I think it was, according to the last meeting. So that's one thing I ask. And you guys have been doing a great job. I know you guys gotten a lot of grief and everything else from a lot of people over there. And, I mean, we've had, we've had issues where, I mean, last year, we had a person with us who was on anchor next to us, just were enjoying the day, and one of the assistant arbiters came over and told me to have to leave because he didn't have a mooring permit. This gentleman lives in Waymouth, on the Back River, has a lobster boat, been a lobsterman for 30 years in Hingham. He can't go over and enjoy World's End because of the mooring sticker restrictions. So I know that's not up for right now, but just some, just some thought on that. As far as the regulations in the harbor bylaws, it does say that the harbor master has to get approval from the Board of Selectmen.
I believe that's just for fees.
Nope. It says changing regulations. It's in the harbor bylaws.
I think-
Section three of harbor bylaws.
I think when the bylaws were passed, it was more of a strong suggestion than really a requirement, because state law actually is what we rely on here. But there was a view that they wanted to make sure that these things were properly socialized and brought before the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, which is what I've done consistently since then and still do. So it's here, and we'll always be coming back here, like I said, for their advice and consent and what they have to say.
And I agree. But eventually, you may retire, and someone else may come in with a power trip, and that's what those bylaws are there for, to keep someone from taking over and saying, "This is the way it is, and we don't have to go in front of you. It's just a, we're just, we're going to change it," because they have an agenda. And it's more of a future thing. Well, I had one more thing. Oh, the anchoring. The anchoring is already a restriction in the mooring field. It needs to be upheld.
It needs to be what?
Upheld.
No anchoring in the mooring field?
Yep. Because they're, like you mentioned, these boats are anchoring right on top of these moorings, and they're swinging into us. I do not have a mooring. I have, on the number 32 on the mooring list. I know I have a long, long time, but it is what it is. I have a friend with a mooring over there. I'm also, I have two boats in Hingham. I can anchor over there even if the sticker is there, here if we need the sticker. So that's about it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, what about boats anchoring in the mooring field?
Yeah, so this is a unique aspect. Traditionally, a mooring field, you don't anchor boats in a mooring area. But there's been a long practice and custom of boats anchoring there. We're trying to continue to keep that in place here. We understand that people that have a mooring and a permit over there, they want to enjoy their mooring with their friends and family, and we do have some transient moorings. We only have four. But we want to be able to make sure that we're able to provide this opportunity and experience for people that don't have the mooring permit or can't afford it or don't want to rent a transient mooring. So it's a delicate balance. We're not looking to prohibit anchoring at this point in time. We did propose these tidal anchorages a year ago. The public did not like that idea. And then it was brought to my attention also that, you know, we don't necessarily want boats dropping anchor in these tidal areas because now we're affecting the environment. So, you know, we do listen to public comments and make the changes as appropriate, and we've decided to try to go back to allowing boats to anchor in that horseshoe area. We understand that there's challenges, and we all work through it and try to, you know, make sure it's safe, but we don't always see it, or, you know, sometimes you tell someone to pull an anchor, and then, you know, you're leaving, they drop it again. So it's tough, and, you know, we'll just, we'll keep working at it, and hopefully, these meetings and communication of this will help spread the word, and people will pay a little bit more attention to it.
Yeah, and this is not a one-and-done, really following up on your question or comment. This is not, "We're going to do it, and then no one looks at it, is it working or not." We've got just such an exceptional relationship with the harbor master, and regardless of who is in that position, we'll make sure that that review is ongoing. So please rest assured that that's the case. But we are so happy that you are the harbor master because you've just been so responsive to concerns of this board as well as members of the public. So thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
So I prepared a letter.
You could start with your name and address, please.
So my name is Eric Dresser. I'm a resident of, actually, I just want to say, before I start, I work off the letter, but in light of some of the information that we spoke about tonight, I may deviate. But I'll give you all a copy when I'm through.
Thank you.
So my name is Eric Dresser. I'm a resident of Waymouth, but a Hingham mooring permit holder, as well as an excise taxpayer in Hingham, where my boat resides at Hingham Yacht Club. So I'm also a mooring permit holder. And that's why I'm here speaking tonight. You may know me from my time spent as the Executive Director of Harbor Media, HCAM, from 2011 to 2016. In addition to growing up Hingham and working here, I've also been a lifelong boater in Hingham Harbor, and I'm a fourth-generation mooring holder in Hingham Harbor going back almost 100 years. So this is a really near and dear topic to my heart, so I felt compelled to come here and speak on this matter, write this letter, because it's very important to me that I be able to continue to use my boat in Hingham Harbor with minimal restrictions, as I and my father before me, his father before him, et cetera, always have. As such, I co-founded the World's End Mooring Advocacy Group on Hingham. I should say that again. World's End Mooring and Anchoring Advocacy Group on Facebook. This is a group created with the goal of preserving a free and accessible Hingham Harbor, including World's End, and it's got 516 members as of today. So a lot of people who care about this. This group has galvanized a lot of individuals who feel this is an important matter and they feel that what is happening is an injustice or an overreach. You may have heard from our group's members already. You heard from some tonight. I'm sure you've got letters and phone calls, I've heard as much, opposing these new regulations. There's also a change.org petition. I've got a link to that here. I hope you'll take a look. It's got 865 signatures. Much of the frustration on these proposed regulations boils down to the changes being proposed, which address a problem that didn't really seem to exist, at least not fully that we'd heard of other than anecdotally. Nothing that would warrant such drastic limitations on harbor usage. And again, this has been much pared down since I wrote this letter, with you only talking about five rafted boats tonight. The restrictions that were put into place during COVID-19 now seem to be adopted permanently through this proposed mooring plan and harbor regulations, and we just don't see why. We see them as extremely aggressive, over limiting, and potentially even federally preempted. In closing, when I was Executive Director of Harbor Media and HCAM, there was a cable advisory committee with whom we worked very closely. I'm sure you guys know them well. This Hingham citizen-led committee is comprised of Hingham citizens, industry professionals, and other stakeholders. It is their charge to make the community's interests, make sure that they're represented while following best practices and observing the law, et cetera. The committee then reports back to the Select Board, allowing a more well-informed decision to be made, and I feel strongly that such an approach is extremely warranted here as well. Simply put, the harbor master should not be acting as the policymaker, judge, jury, and executioner. I'm glad to hear that the Harbor Development Committee does have a role in some of this. I kind of feel personally that it should be a bit more. I finished this letter by, by asking that you consider utilizing or developing an advisory committee such as I've described with regards to this matter in order to involve the community in this process, make the right decision, and avoid unnecessarily lengthy and reactionary hearings such as we're seeing. It's my opinion that this has been, that anything less than this would fail to pay proper due diligence to this matter, which is obviously very near and dear to so many. I thank you for your time and consideration of this matter. And I did just want to say that I do think, sitting in this room, that the emails and correspondence you already got really helped to steer landing on five mooring, five rafted boats. And that just goes to show how much dialogue is important on this. So please don't marginalize that. Do what you can to make sure that stays. This from the Community Media Guy.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Tom, anything you wanted to add or Michelle?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you.
So I believe that we do have a specific regulations that are, that we talked about in terms of the five. Why am I not seeing that in my?
Is that section 15?
Oh, share off of yours. Okay. So where is the red line? Right. So there are, let's deal this. There are existing regulations for World's End and what is being proposed is a modification of section 15E. And the specific proposal is to add a subsection 4 to E, which concerns rafting, which says, "No more than five vessels shall raft or tie to a mooring without prior harbor master written consent." And there is also a sub 6 being added saying, "Swim at your own risk," which I think in that area is probably clear, but you're making it clear, just as clear in the regulations. So that is consistent with what you've told us. I mean, I have been pre-COVID out there and I've seen events that are not necessarily reported but are what I would consider near misses. So I think it's prudent that we proceed and the comments that we've, that we've all heard, I think, have informed this discussion. We received many of those comments prior to today through emails, through phone calls. They were all read, they were all listened to. And this is clearly an important issue for the town. It's an important issue from a safety perspective as well as from the environment. And we do recognize the importance of boating. This is, you know, Hingham, we're on the water. And the harbor is such an important resource for the town that our, our goal is to make it a safe and fun place that we can all enjoy. So with that, I would accept a motion.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the proposed changes to section 15, World's End mooring area of the Town of Hingham mooring regulations as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for the presentation.
Can you just summarize, just in case you ran out of time, just five boats for a water?
Correct.
Yes, and swim at your own risk.
And also swim at your own risk. Remember that.
What was the anchoring restriction?
That is some
Rafting anchoring?
It was rafting, limited to five. And we're, we are going to be reviewing the regulations with the assistance of the harbor master. Some basic cleanup issues and addressing issues, not necessarily all at one time, but as, as they come up to make sure that the safety issues and the issues of boaters are listened to, respected, and ultimately addressed. So thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks. Next item on our agenda is the reappointment. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, next item on the agenda is the reappointment of Eileen McCracken to the Hingham Contributory Retirement Board. Now, I thought Eileen herself had retired. What are you, what are you doing, Tom? If you could explain what's going on.
It's a long leash to people that do good work in Hingham.
Okay.
As Mr. Reardon is aware. Yeah, so Eileen has been a regular member of the Hingham Contributory Retirement Board for a number of years. And this is, her, her term is up and this is just simply a reappointment, a selectman appointment. She, her, her position is a selectman appointee. She is not one of the employee elected members. She is a selectman appointee, so therefore she does not need to be an employee anymore.
Okay. And the term of her appointment is for three years?
Three-year term.
And has she consented to this?
Does that matter? I've never asked that question.
She's not here to She's not here to defend herself. Michelle, do you have anything?
Nope.
I'm sorry, Liz?
No questions.
Members of the public, questions? Hearing none, I would take a motion.
I make a motion to reappoint Eileen McCracken to the Hingham Contributory Retirement Board for a three-year term ending June 30, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Next item on the agenda is public comment on items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Anyone have a public comment to make? Then we will move on to the Town Administrator Report. Oh, I'm sorry, we did not do. I skipped over that. I apologize. Tom?
Hopefully, we don't have to do these for much longer, but we'll see. So the COVID-19 update for, for June 15, 2021 is as follows. Regarding COVID-19 data, as of today, confirmed COVID-19 cases in Massachusetts totaled 662,855 total cases. The seven-day average of COVID-19 cases in the state has been trending downwards since April, since early April. The statewide positivity rate is down to 0.42% and the seven-day average of confirmed deaths from COVID-19 has dropped to 4.1. And if you remember, that's down from a peak of around 175. So there's obviously been a significant change. According to public health data from the Mass Department of Public Health released last week, the town's designation is now gray, indicating 10 or fewer new cases. There have been five new cases of COVID-19 in Hingham over the past 14 days and a total of 1,966 cases in Hingham since the start of the pandemic. The average daily incidence rate for the Town of Hingham dropped to 1.5 per 100,000 residents and our, our percent positivity rate was 0.44% for the previous 14 days. Regarding the vaccine rollout, according to the DPH's daily COVID-19 vaccine report, over 4 million people in Massachusetts have been fully vaccinated as of today. Vermont and Massachusetts continue to lead the way nationwide in terms of percent of the population that is fully vaccinated, according to Johns Hopkins University, with Massachusetts at almost 55%. As of last week, nearly 63% of Hingham residents have been fully vaccinated. We are continuing to get word out to ensure that any Hingham resident who still wishes to get the vaccine knows that they can access it locally through several pharmacies such as CVS, Walgreens, and the Hingham Center Pharmacy, as well as through the state's mobile vaccine program. Residents who are looking to help, looking for help accessing the COVID-19 vaccine should call the state's Vaccination Central Intake Line at 833-983-0485. They can also contact our senior center staff at 781-804-2292. Regarding reopening and public meetings, as of yesterday, Town Hall and Town Offices, the Senior Center and the Recreation Department's Fitness Room have reopened to the public for the first time in several months. Hingham Public Library has also returned to a normal operating schedule with evening hours. It is wonderful to see more life and energy safely returning to our facilities. In line with CDC and DPH guidance, unvaccinated people are advised to continue wearing face coverings and to protect, and to practice social distancing when accessing municipal facilities to help protect themselves and others from COVID-19. We will, we have installed plastic barriers at many service counters and hand sanitizing stations are positioned throughout our buildings. And again, we recommend and request that all unvaccinated people continue to avail themselves of, of those precautionary measures. We ask that everyone abide by and be respectful of the health and safety protocols we have put in place as the safety of our residents and employees is our primary concern, as it has been throughout the entirety of the pandemic.
Tom, if residents have issues with transportation getting to, get vaccinated, is there assistance that's available? Michelle?
Yes. So that would be where the state's mobile vaccine program comes in handy. And I understand from our Health Department that they've changed their criteria to be, it's expanded beyond homebound residents. So that is one resource. And the number that Tom read off, 833-983-0485, would connect people to the state's vaccination line and help them get connected with that program.
And this report, as with all of our COVID reports, will be on the website in the morning with that phone number available to anybody who wants it.
Great.
Great.
Liz, any questions about the report?
One thing we had talked about was including a message in the HMLP bills.
Yes. So we, last week, we had mentioned that we noticed a concerning trend or our Health Department noticed a concerning trend where our residents age 75 plus, their vacci, their fully vaccination or vaccinated rate was lagging behind the state rates. So we talked about a number of ways to get the word out to them and one that we're pursuing with HMLP is to be put, to be able to put like an insert in the next bill that goes out to let people know how they can access the vaccine locally through these pharmacies and also these other resources like the state's program and the senior center number where people can call and then our staff can help you get connected.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions from the public on the report? Okay. Next, then, we'll move to the Town Administrator Report and I will begin asking either Michelle or Tom to discuss the impact of Juneteenth on town services, which I'd liked to do before.
Sure.
Michelle?
Thank you. So yes, in light of the new state holiday, Juneteenth, we will be closing our transfer station and the Hingham Public Library this Saturday, June 19. And then as is our practice, when there are state holidays that fall on a Saturday, we will also be closing Town Hall, the DPW Office, and the Senior Center this Friday in observance of the holiday.
Great. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to your administrator report?
No, thank you. Just welcome back, Tom.
Tom?
Nothing other than to say thank you to everyone. All the well wishes were very heartwarming and I feel much better. I'm glad to be here. Rare to go.
And we're glad you're here. Liz?
Let's see. Since our last meeting, I met with Chief Murphy and toured the three fire stations, which was great. Met with Veterans Services. We have another evening of talent bank interviews tomorrow night. And just want to acknowledge today's the last day of school in Hingham Public Schools. So congratulations and thank you to our colleagues on the school committee and the school board. Everyone worked incredibly hard to get to today safely.
Yes. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. So for my report, I want to begin by saying that, right now, there is contemporaneously with this meeting, a ceremony at the Hingham Fire Department, where there's a promotion, or there has been a promotion of several officers, and I would like to read their names. David Levinson promoted to Deputy Chief of Operations. Colby Walcox to Captain. James Sheard to Lieutenant. Owen McKenna to Lieutenant. Kyle Keegan, firefighter. James McFarlane, firefighter. Ben Cronin, firefighter. David Perez, firefighter. Patrick Sheridan, firefighter. Ben Yodzio, firefighter. Jeffrey James, firefighter. Kevin McMaster's firefighter. And John Giasulo, firefighter. Congratulations to all of them. We wish them well. And this past Sunday, there was the firefighters' memorial service. It was held at the fire department to honor and remember firefighters who have passed away. And Deputy Levinson did a wonderful job officiating there. And with that, I thank you all for participating in our first in-person Select Board meeting of the year. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.